Bueh, meine Name ist Susana Milão. Als erste Präsentation der Konferenz und dann beginnen wir mit 20 Minuten, wie Sie wissen. Wir haben als Erste die Präsentation Janan Albariak von der Technischen Universität im Mittlerosten, aus der Türkei, und der Autoren Ruíco Lasso von der Universität Lisbon, Portugal. Sie wird die erste Konferenz präsentieren: „Z-Toleranz: drei-dimensionale abstrakte Darstellung der migrationsschulischen Probleme in Europa“. Die zweite Präsentation wird Anna-Luisa Mafini am rechten Ende. Anna-Luisa Mafini kommt von Rio Grande do Sul, Brasilianische Federal University. Die andere Autoren ist Clarice Maraschin. Der Titel lautet „Urban Segregation and social-spatial interactions: a confugational approach“. Die dritte Präsentation hat Anna-Luisa Rolin am linken Ende. Larissa Gomes von Panobuco Catholic University aus Brasilien ist die andere Autoren. Anna-Luisa kommt auch von der gleichen Universität. Der Thema „Design strategies and sexism in domestic spaces: a critical analysis of three modernist social housing icons“. Die letzte Präsentation ist Katarina Ruivo. Katarina, Sie wissen, Katarina ist aus der Hause. Katarina kommt von der Organisation aus Portugal. Sie macht die Präsentation „Scava: space configuration accessibility and visibility analyses: a 3D space syntax approach“. Die anderen Autoren sind auch von Ihnen, Franklin, David und George Vash bekannt. 20 Minuten für ihre Präsentation. Ich hoffe, wir haben Zeit, es hängt von der Organisation ab. Wir haben den Diskurs. Wir beginnen jetzt. Vielen Dank.
Ich bin Janan Albariak Lasso. Ich bin Ph.D. Studentin der Technischen Universität im Mittlerosten. Heute werde ich Ihnen etwas mit meiner These belegen. Aber ich werde ein Projekt präsentieren, das wir gemacht haben. Wir haben eine Vorlage für eine Ausstellung vorgeschlagen, die eine Bewusstseinsgewinnung für migrationsschulische Probleme in Europa erzielen will. Wir haben diese Ausstellung „Z-Toleranz“ namensgegeben. Migration ist ein Highlight der sensiblen Debatten mit einem zunehmenden Medienfokus. Diese Probleme sind hauptsächlich durch Diagramme, Statistiken, Proportionalen, Nummern repräsentiert. Aber in dieser Studie haben wir eine visuelle abstrakte Sprache vorgeschlagen, um diese Probleme zu behandeln. Innerhalb unserer Forschung haben wir die Migranten als ein Umgebungsthema verwendet, um jemanden zu nennen, der sich permanent oder semi-permanente aus dem Land entfernt hat, deswegen gibt es einige soziale, ökonomische und kulturelle Gründe. Innerhalb dieses Dokumentes haben wir speziell drei Fälle von aktuellen migrationsschulischen Problemen untersucht. Obwohl die allgemeine Tendenz in den Medien, Migration als eine Krise zu behandeln, nicht zwingend ein Zustand von Krise repräsentiert. Und sogar einige Länder versuchen, Migration in ihrem Land zu fördern, indem sie Migranten rechtliche Eigenschaften bieten. Zum Beispiel Portugal gibt es Rezidenzrechte an fremde Investoren für das Goldenvizaprogramm. Dieses Goldenvizaprogramm hat in den letzten Jahren viele türkische Menschen dazu geführt, in Portugal zu leben und in Portugal zu investieren. Nicht nur durch das Goldenvizaprogramm und nicht nur durch die Investitionen, sondern Portugal gibt auch Nationalität an sabbatige Juden. Der zweite Aspekt, den wir untersucht haben, ist die Stärkung der Grenzen. Die gefertigte Grenze zwischen Spanien und Marokko ist natürlich im Kontrast mit dem vorherigen Fall, den ich erwähnt habe, mit Portugal, mit Migranten. Der dritte Aspekt, den wir untersucht haben, ist die Grenzen der Verbindung. Wir haben diesen Aspekt durch die Beziehung von Tunisien und Italien untersucht. Dies ist ein interessanter Punkt. Nehmen Sie in minder, bis zum Jahr 1980 wurden Tunisierinnen sogar nicht eine Visat benötigt, um in Italien einzutreten. Wir haben entschieden, Islamische Geometrie zu verwenden, um diese migrationsschulischen Probleme als generelle Sprache zu behandeln. Islamische Geometrie sind die wichtigsten visualen Elemente in islamischer Kunst und Architektur. Obwohl ihre finalen Kompositionen sehr komplex sind, sind die Generationenregeln für diese纹en sehr einfach. Ein Kompass und ein Ruler sind nur die Werkzeuge, die nötig sind, um diese纹en zu zeichnen und zu designen. Die meisten Islamischen纹en basieren auf der Darstellung und Tassierung eines einzelnen Motivs in eine komplizierte Komposition. Dementsprechend sind die Symmetrie und der Einsatz von Grids die Hauptdesignprinzipien. Diese regelmäßigen Designprinzipien machen Islamische Geometrie sehr leicht und sehr geeignet für algorithmische Generationen, weil sie grundlegende einfache Regeln folgen. Nicht nur dieser Aspekt, aber der zweite Aspekt, warum wir entschieden haben, Islamische Geometrie zu verwenden, ist, weil es durch die Übersetzung der Islamischen Geometrie, die wir sehen, dass sie mit dem beobachteten Verfolgen der Menschen in der europäischen Migration verknüpft sind, nämlich Nordafrika, SüdEuropa und Mittlerosten. Bei der Migration ist es sehr wichtig, zu verstehen, wie die Veränderungen der Ansichtsperspektive verändert werden. Anamorphismus liefert den gleichen Meldung durch die physische Distanzierung der Perspektive. Anamorphismus hat mehrere Bedeutungen, aber es gibt zwei Typen Anamorphismus. Das erste ist, in dem die distorbenen Bilder Form und Bedeutung erzielen, wenn wir aus einer bestimmten Standpunkt aussehen. Und zweimal ist die Distanzierung der Bilder mehr komplex. Wir brauchen ein Mirr- oder ein Kalkül, um die Bilder zu sehen und die Bilder zu ergleichen. Und weil Anamorphismus auch die Regeln der Perspektive folgt, und ihre Natur der Regeln macht sie auch geeignet für algorithmische Generationen. Wir verwenden parametrische Modellierung in unserem Design. Wir verwenden diesen Formelmethoden, um die migrationsschulischen Probleme, die allgemein durch eine tägliche Sprache repräsentiert sind, in eine visuelle Sprache zu traduzieren. Wir verwenden parametrische Modellierung als翻译erer. Unser Parametrischem Modell enthält zwei Stadien. Die erste Stufe ist die Anamorphe, die Generation der Anamorphe. Die zweite Stufe ist, wie wir diese fliegenden Linien bauen werden. Unser letzter Objekt muss eine bautbare Struktur sein, die von Camp Technologies geschaffen werden kann. Speziell in diesem Fall verwenden wir PETG transparente Schichten und CNC-Cutters. Wir definierten zunächst einen Ausfluss in einem Kup. In diesem Ausfluss haben wir zwei Islamische纹en. Im y=0 Plan definieren wir eine Islamische Geometrie aus dem landesmitliegenden Migrantenland. Im x=0 Plan definieren wir eine Islamische Geometrie aus dem landesmitliegenden Migrantenland. In den Fällen, die ich vorher erwähnt habe, drei Fälle. Dann berechnen wir den minimalen Anzahl der Kontrollpunkte, um diese纹en zu zeichnen. Dann mergeen wir sie in den 3D-Kup, den Ausflusskup. Hier werden die Kontrollpunkte des ersten Islamischen纹en aus dem landesmitliegenden Migrantenland in die Kontrollpunkte des landesmitliegenden Migrantenlands mergeen. Für die x-Koordinaten wurde direkt vorgetragen, dass die Kontrollpunkte der 3D-Objekt aus dem纹en, der in dem x-y-Plan definiert ist. Und die y-Koordinaten der Kontrollpunkte werden aus dem纹en, der in dem y-y-Plan definiert ist, definiert. Hier ist jedoch der Schlüsselpunkt, die Definition der Z-Kontrollpunkte. Denn diese Information kommt direkt von diesen beiden bestimmten纹en. Wir mussten die Konvergenz für diese Punkte finden. Dementsprechend haben wir die Idee gefunden, diese Z-Mergepunkte als eine Toleranzwert zu definieren. Das wurde auch „Z-Toleranz“ in unsere Ausstellung namensgegeben. Dementsprechend können wir verschiedene Designalternativen generieren. Aber durch diesen Prozess wollten wir auch einige migrationsschulische Aspekte erzielen. Hier haben wir drei Fälle untersucht, die sind soziale und kulturelle Exklusion, Integration und Assimilation. Wenn die Z-Toleranzwerte so klein sind, nicht so klein, sind sie null, dann können die Z-Kontrollpunkte nicht in ein 3D-Form mergeen. Und wenn die Z-Toleranzwerte so hoch sind, können die纹en mergeen, aber manchmal deformen eine纹en so stark, dass sie die Lesbarkeit verlieren und ihre grundlegenden Designprinzipien verlieren. Durch die Definition der Z-Toleranzwert wollen wir darstellen, dass die Spannungen entstehen, die durch die Mergeung unterschiedlicher Kolors entstehen. In unserem physischen Fall entstehen sie durch unterschiedliche Islamische Geometrie. In unseren Fällen, die wir gebildet haben, verwenden wir immer die Z-Toleranzwerte für die Fälle von Integration, Exklusion und Assimilation. Innerhalb dieses Studiums haben wir drei Installations. Das erste Mal haben wir eine Islamische Geometrie aus Steinkarren aus Akmedrese in der Türkei verwendet. Wir mergeen sie mit dem Tile-Wenigsten von der National Tile Museum in Lisbon. Dies ist der Modell. Im zweiten Fall, eine纹ne auf einem Holzschacht in einem Zoo in Marrakech in Marokko mergeen mit dem Tile-Wenigsten von Alcazar de Sevilla in Spanien. In unserem dritten Modell verwenden wir ein Tile-Wenigsten aus der Kibla Wall in der Großmusee von Cairn mit dem Tile-Wenigsten aus der Montréale Kathedrale in Palermo, Italien. Nachdem unser Designprozess nicht mit diesen Installations beendet wurde, weil wir auch die bestimmten Standpunkte für die Menschen, die zur Ausstellung kommen, haben müssen, die diese Geometrie in Bedeutung bringen müssen. Sie könnten diese纹en sehen. Wir haben einige mathematische Handkalkulationen mit fotografischen Techniken verwendet, um diese bestimmten Standpunkte berechnen zu können. Als Weiteres unserer Forschung haben wir vorgeschlagen, diese Standpunkte auch computieren zu können. Es gibt viele vorherige Arbeit, die Anamorphismus und Migration belegen, aber unsere Teilnahme in dieser Forschung ging hauptsächlich auf zwei Aspekte zurück. Das erste ist, dass nicht nur durch die letzte Form, sondern auch durch den Formfindungsprozess wir diese migrationsschulischen Probleme repräsentieren wollten. Wir haben also jeden Schritt unserer Forschung geplant, um einige Grundbedeutungen für diese migrationsschulischen Probleme zu haben. Durch die kombinierte Nutzung parametrischer Modellierung, mathematische Kalkulationen und fotografische Techniken haben wir versucht, eine formalisierte Methode für die Perspektive basierende Aspekte der Anamorphe zu entwickeln. Vielen Dank für die Aufmerksamkeit.
Guten Morgen, fast Abend. Mein Name ist Anna-Luisa. Ich komme von der federalen Universität Rio Grande do Sul, Brasilien. Dieses Werk war ein vorheriges Studium, ein Beginn meiner Dissertationstudie. Ich bin Studentin Master in der Universität. Ich arbeite hier mit meinem Trainer, Clarice Maraschin. Wir haben versucht, Urban Segregation aus der Perspektive der sozialen-spatialen Interaktionen zu studieren und versucht, Möglichkeiten zu finden, sie zu messen. Wir starten mit der Idee, dass Raum eine integralste Bestandteil des Außergewinns ist. Die Art, wie Raum organisiert ist, beeinflusst die Perspektive des anderen, sowohl als fremd und gefährlich als auch einfach unterschiedlich. Die Idee war, dass wir durch die Möglichkeit, die wir haben, den anderen zu interagieren, die verschiedenen Menschen zu sehen, wir eine bessere Empathie gegenüber dem anderen haben und nicht nur es komplett gefährlich betrachten. Die Hauptideen von Segregation, die wir anfangen zu verwenden, stammen von der Idee der Einschränkung der Interaktion von Freiheit. Und dann, üblich in der Architektur und im Urbanplanung, sehen wir es als Trennung. Es kann eine Trennung von Menschen, Aktivitäten und Funktionen sein. Vilassa auch über jede Form von Exklusion, die sich in einer besonderen Weise in der Stadt manifestiert. Es gibt zwei Hauptansätze für Segregation, die geografische und soziologische Ansätze. Historisch wurde die geografische Ansätze häufiger verwendet, wenn es um Urbanplanung und Architekturstudien von Segregation geht, die Analyse lokaler纹en von Wohnungen ist. Besonders in Brasilien ist das die Hauptansätze, die es getan hat. Aber mit dem Entwicklung neuer Technologien und besseren Weisen, um Daten und Informationen zu sammeln, ist es jetzt leichter, Segregation aus einer morphologischen konfigurationalen Ansicht zu studieren, die die Beschreibung von Segregation mit Beziehungen zwischen Menschen, Aktivität und Raum betrachtet. Sie können für die täglichen Routinen von Individuen und ihr Bewegung in öffentlichen Räumen bezahlen. Also ist kein Evolution des anderen, auch nicht besser. Es ist nur eine andere Ansicht. Jetzt mit den neuen Daten und Informationen ist es leichter zu studieren. Der Hauptziel der Arbeit war, Segregation zu analysieren als eine Einschränkung von sozial-spatialen Interaktionen und neue Formen der Evaluierung und Messung zu suchen in einer spezielleren Weise. Wir präsentieren eine Methodologie der Analyse, die mit konfigurationalen Modellen verwendet wird. Wir entwickeln eine empirische Anwendung in einer kleinen brasilianischen Stadt, Ibirubá, in Südbrasilien. Um besser zu verstehen, wie wir dies angehen, müssen wir den Latimerika-Kontext berücksichtigen, wo Segregation grundsätzlich aus soziale, ökonomische Gründen kommt. Wir haben Gender-Segregation und Racial-Segregation. Aber wenn sie in einem Raum manifestieren, sind es üblich soziale, ökonomische Segregation. Brasilien ist die größte Wirtschaft in Latinamerika, aber sie liegt among den höchsten Indikatoren der Ingleichsungleichheit im Weltwelt. Sie ist der 10. höchste ungleiche Land im Weltwelt und der erste in der Inkomensenkonzentration among die reichsten 1% der Bevölkerung. Wenn wir dies von einer urban-spatial Konfiguration angehen, betrachten wir, dass Modelle simplifizierte Darstellungen der Realität sind. Sie bezahlen nicht alles, was in der Stadt ist. Sie müssen einige Simplifikationen haben. Sie vernehmen, dass die Stadt hierarchische纹en von spatial Differentiation beeinflussen und andere Aspekte. Wir verwenden Methodologien, die das Aggregieren der Stadt in Komponenten verwenden. Und die Beziehungen verwenden wir durch die Graphtheorie, die die analytische Basis für die Berechnung bietet. Die Modelle vernehmen alle die kürzeste Pfadhypothese. Für das eine Stadt würde eine besondere Differenzierung demonstrieren. Hier sehen wir, wie die Citymap transformiert in eine Streetsegment-Darstellung, die dann durch Software gelesen wird als Graph-Darstellung. Weil wir Streetsegment-Darstellungen verwenden, ist jedes Segment einer Straße zwischen zwei Körnern ein Segment, und dann wird dieser Segment ein Noden in der Graph-Darstellung werden. Und seine Relation zu den anderen Segments wird die Links in der Graph. Es gab andere Studien über dies. Feitoso, der brasilianische Autor, studiert es, indem er Indexen von Ebenen und Clustering, Exposure und Isolation verwendet. Legja B. studiert die Co-Presence-Werte, indem er spatial Syntax verwendet. Vinicius Neto studiert Segregation mit der Möglichkeit von Encounters. Er hat einige Studien gemacht, die die Bewegungen von Menschen betrachten, indem er verschiedene Transportmodus verwendet. Die Methodologie, die wir vorschlagen und angehen, analysiert Segregation als basierend auf konfigurationalen Modellen. Wir verwenden ein Centrality-Modell, um die Wahrscheinlichkeit der Interaktion zwischen Individuen aus verschiedenen sozioökonomischen Trata zu repräsentieren. Wir bauen zwei Szenarien, die zu hohen und niedrigen Inkomens residenzieren. Richtung Rettungsdepots. Wir vergleichen diese zwei Szenarien und versuchen, die Räume zu identifizieren, mit den höheren und niedrigeren Potenzialen für Interaktion in der Stadt. Und daraus haben wir eine erste Messung von Segregation. Die Centrality-Proprietät ist eine Eigenschaft einer Zelle, die along der Pfad, der zu anderen Zellen führt. Und ihre Hierarchie ist durch den totalen Anzahl der Male gegeben. Diese eine Zelle erscheint auf den Pfaden, der alle Paare Zellen eines Systems verbindet. Wir verwenden die Wertung zwischen der Centrality, weil sie Spannungen betrachtet, sie nimmt in account Attributen und die Relation mit der Entfernung. Die Spannung reflektiert die Beziehung zwischen zwei Punkten, expressbar durch den Produkt von ihrer Inhalt, ihren Attributen. Und die Entfernung refers zu der Ausweitung der kürzesten Pfad zwischen jedem Paar von Punkten. Und es increases, als die Centrality der Zelle im Pfad decreases. Es erlaubt, die Spannungen zu berechnen, die zwischen Aktivitäten im System generiert werden, als Indikator für den sozialen Fluss von Individuen, die durch das spatial System bewegen, um diese Aktivitäten zu erledigen. Hier haben wir die mathematische Formel für dies. Für uns war die größte Bedeutung, die wir hatten, die Wertung zwischen der Centrality zu verwenden, um die Attributen zu addieren und die Entfernung in account zu nehmen. Weil wenn wir über Segregation sprechen, war die Entfernung ein sehr wichtiger Attribut für uns. Die Schritte für die Methodologie waren, die Stadt als Netzwerk zu repräsentieren, die diskretten Einheiten des urbanen Räums zu definieren. Wir haben Streetsegments gewählt, weil wir die geografische Entfernung berücksichtigen. Für uns, um Excel-Maps zu verwenden, wäre die Entfernung... Ich habe die Worte in Englisch verirrt. Das wäre nicht der beste Ansatz, um die Excel Map zu verwenden. Wir führten mit Streetsegments. Wir benutzten Daten vom Brasilianischen Institut für Geografie und Statistik. Weil es eine kleine Stadt war, die wir auf jede Straße checken konnten, um zu sehen, ob es der echte war, haben wir die Open Street Map verwendet, um die Daten zu aktualisieren, weil die Daten, die wir aus Ibeje hatten, von 2010 stammen. Es gab ein paar Änderungen. Wir benutzten Daten über Residenz, die korrespondieren zur Anzahl der Bevölkerung in jedem Streetsegment, auch aus den Daten Ibeje. Sie lieferten ein Netzwerk dieser Sektoren in einem Shapefile Format, das wir in der GIS-Enviroment benutzten. Die Gesamtbevölkerung wurde dann in die Streetsegments verteilt. Dies ist die Stadt Ibirubá. Wir mussten die Streetsegments Map zeichnen und dann in ein Graph verwandeln. Wir mussten die Residenz durch Inkomistrata unterscheiden. Wir definierten sie in drei verschiedene Kategorien. Low, die waren Familien mit mindestens 350, medium und high. Das war auch eine sehr schwierige Stufe, weil wir die Wirtschaft der Stadt betrachten mussten. Weil ein Mindestwagen für eine kleine Stadt im Landtag hatte einen anderen Einfluss als ein Mindestwagen in der Kapitale des Staates. All das musste in account sein und mit der Realität vergleichen. Die Werte der Mindestwagen stammen von 2010, also war es sehr gering in Brasilien. Das ist der Grund, warum die Mindestwagen in der Weise separiert werden. Wir mussten die Daten für die Rettungsanrichtungen erhalten, die wir in ein paar Forschungsmöglichkeiten gemacht haben. Die Daten, die die Attributen der Bevölkerung und die Rettungsaktivitäten beinhalten, wurden in Tabelle in der GIS-Enviroment organisiert und importiert zu dem Software Medidas Urbanas, um die konfigurationalen Analysen zu erledigen. Für dieses Dokument haben wir alle Rettungsanrichtungen als gleiches Niveau von Attraktivität benutzt. Wir unterscheiden sie nicht durch den Anzahl der Mitarbeiter oder die Größe oder etwas. Wir benutzten die geometrische Entfernung. Die Ergebnisse, die erhalten wurden, wurden dann zur GIS-Plattform gebracht, um zu evaluieren und vergleichen zu können. Ibirubá ist eine Stadt, die drei Hauptregionen hat. Weil zwei Regionen sehr rurisch sind, haben wir nur die more urbanen verwendet. Sie hat eine Bevölkerung von ungefähr 20.000. Dies ist die Distribution von Residenz durch Inkom. Hier ist die Downtown-Region. Hier haben wir neue soziale Wohnprojekte, die nicht erscheinen, weil die Daten von 2010 sind, die neuen Wohnprojekte sind später. Wir hatten auch Schwierigkeiten mit der Berechnung, weil dies eine Straße ist, die durch die Stadt passiert, die einen sehr hohen Fluss von Truck und Transporten für Industrie hat. Also hindert die Menschen die diese Straße zu benutzen. Wenn wir die topologische Berechnung hätten, würde dies als nur ein Schritt erscheinen und die Ergebnisse ändern. Dies sind die Standorte der Rettungsanrichtungen. Sie sind sehr konzentriert in der Downtown- und Hauptstraße. Dies war unser erstes Resultat der Wertung der Centrality für die hohen Inkomistrata. Wir können sehen, dass die Pfada mit den höchsten Resultaten um die Downtown liegen. In den Resultaten für die Wertung der Centrality für die niedrigen Inkomistrata waren auch die höchsten Resultate in Downtown, aber sie beginnen zu schauen in Richtung, wo die Menschen leben. Dann mussten wir eine Vergleichung machen. Für das haben wir eine Bivariate Map Analyse verwendet, in der wir die Resultate für die hohen Inkomistrata sammelten und in drei Kategorien dividierten, A, B und C. Für die Resultate in der niedrigen Inkomistrata wurden sie in 1, 2 und 3 dividiert. Wir machten dann die Vergleichung. Die Resultate, die uns am meisten interessierten, waren 1A, die die wahrscheinlichsten Resultate für den Encounter waren, wo es eine hohe Wertung für beide Inkomistrata gab. 1C und 3A waren die Resultate, die wir betrachteten, es würde mehr Segregation geben, wo es die wenigstens wahrscheinlich für den Encounter war. Wenn wir die Vergleichung machten, erschien der einzige Resultat, der uns interessant war, 1A. 1C und 3A erschienen nicht, weil wir den Grund dafür hatten, das ist, was wir glauben, weil alle Rettungsanrichtungen in der Downtown sind. Jeder muss nach Downtown gehen. Es ist also keine segregierte Stadt, wenn es um Rettungsanrichtungen geht. Die Pfada, die Menschen nutzen, sie shoppen in denselben Orten. Die Konklusion war, wir fuhren, um zu demonstrieren, wie eine konfigurationalen Methodologie für die Identifikation von Segregation oder nicht eingesetzt werden kann. Es erlaubt, verschiedene soziale Attributen und besondere Faktoren zu nutzen. Weil wir nur Rettungsanrichtungen auf diesem, aber Sie können jede Attribut verwenden, Sie können für Shoppen, für Studien, für Arbeiten, für... for shopping, for studying, working, anything. And also, the modeling implies simplification based on the data available. But if you had the data, you could add as much attributes as you like. You could consider the transport system people use. High-income people have different transportation access than the low-income. So all of that could be applied to this methodology. We did not use because we did not have the data or the time for that. But that all could be done. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, late morning. My name is Ana Luisa. I'm here to present Larissa's work, actually, that was done in her undergrad thesis last year. So I consider it's an initial approach to sort of a classic space syntax type of analysis that was pretty much motivated by what was happening in Brazil back then, last year. So this is our current president. He's probably familiar with the scenario in Brazil a little bit. But last year, Women's Day, he went on TV and all kinds of media and stated what he thought about women. And so I just highlight here the sort of most dramatic part of his speech, which is women are beings that belong to the home and so forth. It went on for about, I don't know how long this speech was. But there were lots of students trying to address this scenario. Is it really the case? And Larissa's work goes into investigating if domestic space translates that or not. Another motivation was what the UN, United Nations, mentioned, that uneven division of household chores plays a big, big role in sort of the disadvantage of women in terms of how many women actually have formal jobs. Obviously, this has been seen through advertising, specifically this is American, North American advertising, where it seems that domesticity is always or tends to be represented by the woman presence or character, if you will. So the man sits here while the woman is back there and so forth. So the overall question was to ask if architecture somehow confirms that or if there is some shifts. And in three iconic projects that were all supposedly done under some socialist ideas. So the three projects that we will look at, sorry, I don't know if you can see the red. They all have collective spaces, such as kitchens and laundries. And they're emerging in context where there were attempts. I cannot show in the paper, you can read more about it, that the context when they occurred, there was already talk about associating women from household activities. So these are the cases we'll try to present here. So Russian project, Narconfin, the Unidad de Habitación by Le Corbusier, and Pedregulho, or Mendes Rocha complex, in Rio de Janeiro. In common, they were all built somehow, considering rationalized or industrialized principles into at least the conception. I wouldn't say construction proceed. And incorporating collective housekeeping services. And the idea was that we would look at that, especially in relation to the cell, the housing unit cell, if by having this sort of collective equipment, the spatial relations in the unit would have some sort of alteration, as opposed to being segregated, as it happens in most cases. So this is the structure here of what we are going to look at. And of course, I'm not going to read that because I think we've been talking about this. But the theoretical basis and analytical basis of the investigation relies on space syntax, basic principles. And the idea of genotypes borrowed from Julian Hansen and some other authors, as well as Amorim, who was not here anymore. His studies, he just had to leave this morning. But he studies domestic spaces, modernist domestic spaces in Brazil and has contributed a lot to the study of domestic space in the field of space syntax. So in these previous studies, we went back to them and compared, put them together, the studies by Hansen and Amorim. Hansen studies houses by architects in Europe. And then Amorim studies modernist houses in Brazil. And they use the idea of rank order of space integration. And in the Brazilian households studied by Amorim, the maid's bedroom is always the most segregated environment of the system. Only 25% of the entire sample of both Hansen and Amorim has a kitchen as more integrated space. So this is the previous studies that we looked at, just as a reference in terms of the methodology. Of course, they are completely different examples from the ones we are looking, but they were housing, domestic spaces. And again, we were interested in this methodology of analyzing the rank order of integration by focusing on sectors, private sector, service sector and social sector of the house, towards questioning if we can come to a genotype of these sectors in these projects. So the question is that whether this logic of modernist design of spaces was different in social housing projects that had collective systems of domestic services. So this is the previous genotype established by Amorim and Hansen. And you can see here, P is a private, meaning bedrooms, service kitchens and other laundry spaces. And S is the social living rooms and less private spaces. Here, so this is the first project. It was actually thought of to have another block here, but it ended up being built like this. An isolated laundry here, collective laundry. And the housing and some, I want to say, like an event space here, but not household. None of the household collective chores were actually done in the same building block where people lived. And we looked into every, each of these projects, we looked into two cells. And the criteria was that the more recurrent cells within the same building block. And of course, the access to floor plans that we had to have somehow in order to generate the plan. So these were the cells we looked for. The Russian project, these are how it's occupied today. The Unidad, I'm going to go, everybody knows the Unidad, I'm pretty sure. And so women is shown here, but it's also shown like this. The other project is the Rio de Janeiro project. This project was done, I should just talk a little bit more about it because maybe it's less familiar to you. It was done by the Department of Popular Housing. And interesting fact is that the Department of Popular Housing was run by a woman, Carmen Portinho. And she had very firm ideas of eliminating unnecessary spaces from the dwelling units, specifically laundries. So we wonder if that would affect what actually happens in the unit. Not so much, but a little bit better than the others. That's what we came to find in the end. So that's the unit we look at. You go up, it's a duplex. And this is sort of like a T zero here in Lisbon, in Portugal. So very quickly, some aspects related to each of these projects. So we have some common aspects. I guess Pedregulho was the most specific one on the speech. If you read the documentation on the conception of the project, there's also this specific mention of eliminating this sort of house chore spaces from the unit. And we looked at these ideas in the scale of the complex as a whole and then at the unit. So in this case is here. This is service space, laundry and kitchen. This one, laundry here, of course, is a different typology. But segregation-wise, it's as segregated as the other ones, relatively speaking. And here, that's the collective laundry. So the physical continuity of the ground floor of these three complexes, we see that it occurs primarily in convivial spaces, not in the service areas. That's what happens here, right there in Pedregulho and the Unidad. We ran convex VGA analysis and Excel analysis of the block itself for the three projects and then the unit. And we can see here that the control, the access to the housing units is marked by this lack of connection between service and leisure or gathering spaces. This is some of the other analyses that showing where the laundry, because we didn't do the collective kitchen for all three projects because we couldn't find exactly kitchen for all of them. Corbusier's project does not have a collective kitchen. So it was difficult to compare one because the other one didn't have that same kind of space. So inside, the laundries are obviously integrated, easy for people to kind of see each other in work. But when it comes to the relation of that space within the system, then that doesn't necessarily happen. I'm just going to go very quick. And then we went to the units. And 80% of the sample, in 80% of the sample analyzed, kitchens constitute segregated spaces compared to other dwelling spaces. And evident access restrictions to the service sector, obviously, if you compare to the more social spaces, like living rooms and so forth. These are the VGA analysis for the units. And Pedregulho is the one that we thought, and you can see here, that's where the kitchen is, has slightly better interaction between living spaces, maybe if you compare to kitchens. Also did some graph analysis of three cases. And in 80% of them, a kitchen is at the same depth level as a living. So they are probably easily accessible, kitchens in terms, if you compare to the living spaces. And this is overall picture of what we analyzed. We have, you know, square footage, depth, integration of every unit. And then we did it, so sorry. This is per complex and now this is isolating the units themselves. So the morphology of the cells expresses polarization of living spaces dedicated to performing households' activities. However, when we relate integration to visibility maps, then the more integrated visually connected spaces remain only in the social sector. So somehow, we can say that there's some evidence that if we think that women by that time were mostly not formally employed but working in household chores, we can say that this sexist aspect of society can be attributed to the ineffectibility and absence of connections from those spaces with the remaining more social spaces within the units. And so the question, is there a genotype? Is it the same or each one of the systems have their own genotype? So this is what we came up with. And so Pedregulho has a more even balance between social service and private sectors. But on the others, it's pretty much, they are all different, slightly different from each other. But nevertheless, social is always more integrated than all the other spaces. So some of the conclusions would be, we couldn't find a common genotype. So each typology in these three cases have their own set of primary information. We found similarities in the position occupied by the service sector in the rank order of the integration sector. We also found that 40% of the service sector remains in second position in all four, sorry, five genotypes. 20% of the service sector, it's only 20% of the service sector scaled as more integrated. And overall, even though we are talking about different projects, if you compare the ones analyzed by Amorim and Hansen with those, 20% of our sample has identical genotypes to those observed by the other authors. And also in common that service sector is the most segregated within the system. This is just an illustration of, because as we found here, that this is a more even situation. Maybe it has to do with the role that Carmen played in the direction of the Department of Public Housing in Rio. We don't know that for sure, but it's quite possible. So basically, I know it's a very preliminary finding, but we can say that at least in these structures, it seems that there's a sort of perpetuation of the gender stereotypes in the domestic spaces. Going forward, Larissa couldn't be here. She's applying for her masters right now. But going forward, we are looking into social housing spaces, especially in Northern Europe, that were designed by women under a participatory process. And then it would be interesting to kind of see if it's designed by women and having participation during the process. If something happens within the cell that reveals a more integrated spaces where there's less separation between household chores and living spaces. I guess that's it. Thank you.
Hello. So, sorry. I'm going to present now a part of an ongoing project of the research lab that's organizing the event. We've been developing a software for the analysis of three-dimensional space that is based on space syntax methodology. It has actually been presented on Monday by Antonio on a work we did together with a Pisces Design Studio. So the software itself is operational and we're very enthusiastic about seeing it used for all kinds of uses. But a lot of it, it's still working in progress. And so here, I'll focus mostly on the problems we have encountered so far and that we've been dealing with them. So this was initially going to be the final slides of this presentation. There are more of a note on future work. But I also have to kind of call this problem one and the sort of motivation for us. Because, well, you guys probably noticed that we have been taking you to all these places with very great views. So you are very aware that Porto is not really a flat city. And it kind of makes sense that it's a research lab based on the city that would first encounter the necessity of creating the software. Obviously, space syntax has not been oblivious to the question of topography and three-dimensionality. And this problem has been approached before. But what we have been finding is that a three-dimensional approach, besides being a possible solution for this problem that space syntax has been encountering, and being able to incorporate three-dimensional qualities into it, it's also a tool that allows us to discover new problems and new ways of dealing with spatial analysis. So for those who don't know, adapting the two-dimensional methodology meant a shift in the conceptual model. Traditionally, in VGA analysis, we'd have something like this, which is a space Traditionally, in VGA analysis, we'd have something like this, which is a space partitioned by a grid in a squared grid, where all the points are put in relation with each other. And is this relation, when analyzed in different ways, that's the basis for the different measures developed in space syntax methodology. When the model is three dimensional, then our grid starts looking at something like this and we can not look at all the points in the same way anymore. It's kind of obvious and intuitive that now we have a set of points that represent the space where people can actually be and saw the space from where they see the globality of spaces. And then all the space and surfaces that are seen from those points. So this results in both a series of different representations for the analysis of space, but in different types, types of analysis as well. You can still have the same type of traditional two dimensional analysis from all the viewing points in the grid to each other and then, which we have on the first picture there. We have also the analysis of all the seen surfaces and seen space from all the viewing points. And then we have something that we haven't really not explored, but are planning on doing, which is the analysis of the entire spatial grid, which we believe could bring very interesting concepts to the analysis of architectural form and style. So this is one of the problems that initially brought us to want to study Casa da Musica, building by Ama in the center of Porto. It's in the business center of the city. In a roundabout, that marks the beginning of a six kilometers long axis connecting the center of, of the city to the western side of it, to the ocean. And it, when it, when the project appeared, it was a controversial, controversial decision to have it here there. And at the time, it generated this big public debate on placing a big architectural object in the center of the city. It was often compared to the Gogranium Museum in Bilbao and the effect stayed there. So what we said to understand was, was a very three dimensional problem, how great an impact the building really had in the area where it was built. So we defined the area to study as the roundabout garden that you see there, the plot where the building is. It also encompasses a large area of Ama-designed collective exterior space and the beginning of the streets leading up to it. So this was the first time we encountered the problem of trees and vegetation when doing three dimensional analysis of visibility. I'm not going to explain this in detail because Antonio already presented it in a much more developed version of the approach he took to this problem. But very quickly, this is when we started working on integrating into the software the ability to generate geometries to which we could give attributes. In this case, the case of trees, we gave them percentage of transparency according to different times of the year. In the summer, they would be almost opaque, greatly impacting the visibility people have in the area. And in the winter, they would allow for much greater comprehension of buildings that define space. So this gave us two sets of results, one for summer, for summer months and the other for winter months, that we kept comparing. So we have summer month below and winter month is up there. And then we also took advantage of the ability that we had to define which points can see space and created different paths for different ways of people perceiving the space according to where they are and the way they use it. So in this image, I'm showing you these three different, four, four different path. One from inside roundabout where the people cross to get from one side of the other of that area at a height of two meters, which is a bit taller than high side. Then the view from the streets, a bit lower because there's people in cars. A view from the Ama-designed public space and the view from the window, the big window of Casa da Musica. So what we can see, going back to the problem of monumentally and urban impact, is that Casa da Musica, well, definitely an architectural object that searched to separate itself from what's around it, doesn't really have this Gogranium-ish quality of monumentality that people were so afraid at at the time. In fact, only when we only take into account the space surrounding the building, is it more visible than the rest of the buildings that define that space? Regarding this space, like surrounding the Casa da Musica, we were all able to collaborate with Anton Terrada, who was studying movement patterns of people around the building for his master thesis in Galicia's Higher School of Education using video tracking. And while I'm not going to try to go into detail on the complexities, complexities of what he did and the way he captured the different kinds of ways people use the space, it was very interesting for us to be able to compare and exchange results with him as an empirical basis for what we were doing. And now I'm quickly trying to show a much different problem that was more, it's more of a practical application of three dimensional analysis of visibility into the organization of a more controlled space. So these kinds of retail spaces have been studied in space syntax, often in parallel with empirical data. And these results systematically show that how people behave in these spaces depends on a very complex set of variables that go beyond the spatial qualities. So for example, it often depends on pre-knowledge people have of expected spatial relations between products and also of a set of visual cues and information that is made available to people in these spaces. So like, you have information signs telling you where things are. You have promotional ads bringing you to certain points of space. So we have chosen to study the layout of an existing supermarket so that we could have, besides the plan and the detail of the explicit elements, information on some key products and where they were located. That, and these are things that most people you search for when they go to a supermarket. And so here we have the model. And these are horizontal sections of space that go from meter to meter and the top ones are at ground level going up to the ceiling. And what was interesting about this analysis, that it allowed us to understand that the areas that at high level are not really visible are exactly the same that you can see the best when looking up at information on the ceiling. And the thing about this case was that it was a very small case, so it was faster to compute and faster to model and we could really experiment on it. And so what we wanted was to experiment with all the kinds of three dimensional, of kinds of the representations that the three dimensional model allowed for. And they did all give us different information about space. We have there, on the, on your left, the identification of points in space that can see most of other points in space. So in this case, we didn't use, we didn't define the viewing point as being on the ground, as being up there. So we could, for example, understand where you could place security cameras. And then on the other image, we go back to having people standing on the floor and we had in July, for example, a good location to put the security guard. So, okay, I'm going back to the slides that I showed at the beginning, that I intended to be at the end, as notes on future work. We are now working on three major things. And I think I have touched very lightly on them during the presentation, which is, well, first off, when it, we're meant to integrate this with CAT tools so that modeling something as large as the center of, the historical center of Porto doesn't take so much time and it's more operational and we may finally properly approach the motivational problem. Also, we may, still need to, to adapt space syntax measures. So far, we've worked with analysis of visibility, but we haven't yet looked at how we can really take advantage of three dimensionality when using space syntax measures. And the third one relates to this last one and is to explore what's three dimensional, what the three dimensional grid can get us in terms of spatial and architectural analysis. So, thank you.
Well, I have some doubts, some questions, but I'd like to propose for the others to put and to make some questions to generate the date.
So I, I just, okay, strange. So I would have three questions for three of you. First, I would like to start with the first analyza. To you, it's not a question, it's more like a suggestion in case of the, of the research will go on. I don't know if it will or not, but I enjoyed very much your presentation, particularly thinking that you are a master student yet. As I saw that Vinicius Neto is one of your references, I, I know that now he's working on, on something that could be a further step for your research. You showed us a map that revealed a configurational approach. You were trying to understand the system of streets. Then you showed us another map with the distribution of income and tried to relate those two things, something that is being explored by, by space syntax and by other configurational approaches. The thing that Vinicius is trying to do now is to, when you go to that map of the distribution of income, you have people living in each of these street blocks. And what he does is to study what these people do during the day. They turn their cell phones on and so he traces their movements along the city so that he can understand in, in which streets of a city, in the case is Rio de Janeiro, in which streets of a system of the city do poor people get in touch with rich people? I'm simplifying, but he is really achieving a more dynamic reading of this relation between the urban form and society income, this. So if you want to pursue this line of research, perhaps talking to Vinicius could be a good, a good thing. So I don't have a question, it's just this. So the second would be for the second analyza. I've also enjoyed very much your, your presentation. And mine would be like a genuine question. It's not a provocative one like Franklin would do. It's more like a genuine. And let's pretend that we don't know Julian Hansen. Let's pretend that we don't know Amurin. Do you think that when we look at an application of space syntax to the city, take for instance the map of Katharina, the city of Porto, she showed very fast an axial map. So she was studying the city with space syntax. Then you could be studying very complex buildings. For instance, in Brazil, Valerio Mudeiros studies legislative power buildings or you could be hospitals or universities like Teresa Iturra does. So this is two different things. Then you can have, for instance, Katharina showed a retail. And then you could have, for instance, a house with just thirty meters square. Do you think that the relevance of space syntax tools is the same when we go through these different, so different things? And so this would be the second, if Katharina wants to answer to that, it's also okay. And my question to Katharina would be, somehow, somewhere along the, your presentation, you told us that your analysis of Casa da Musica, if I understood it well, revealed that it was a non-disturbing building and that to me came as, I, I, I'm not questioning the relevance of it to be disturbing, because I think it has the relevance to be disturbing. I think the location also asks for something disturbing. What I'm asking is you to find it not disturbing. So, that's it.
What your analysis showed us was that as an architectural building, it's not disturbing, it doesn't disturb the rules of the urban area around it. I, living in Porto, I think it's a very disturbing building and it's, in its content, more than in its form, if you're asking for my personal opinion as someone who really knows the area. And I know I didn't really get into it because it was not really the scope of the presentation, but I did show a bit of Anton's work and how we, what he analyzed, what's the different types of ways people use the collective space around it, the exterior space with, so there you have the skateboarders, skaters, you have the businessmen, you have all these kinds of people who use it in very different ways and very actively. So honestly, I think that the analysis makes a lot of sense because the building in itself, it's not disturbing, but the complete intervention of Ama and that place has changed the place. So it's not necessarily a, as a big object that fell there. So I think that's my answer.
I would just like to say that I'm familiar with the Vinicius work and he used big dot, big data, I think, from Twitter and other kind of big data. And for us, we had a short period of time for the analysis and we were trying to use the software that's been developed in university in Numeropolis. But at the time, it wasn't finished yet, so we had to use Medidas Urbana, which is kind of an old software, it still works, but we had a limitation of the data and information we could add at that moment for the time that it took for the calculations and the proceedings. But yes, of course, I would take you.
I, I think what you did for your master, it's quite good. The suggestion would be likely if you want to go for PhD or something, you could be...
Yeah, I'm still working on my masters, so, thank you.
Sorry, so, so your question was if space syntax is relevant when you're talking about different sort of complexity levels in buildings? Is that...
Yes. Any city, starting from the city until, for instance, farms or towns, is it the same, is as relevant when we are looking at London as... as when we are looking to a small house, open?
I think that, I think I would answer like that. I think when we're studying domestic spaces specifically, convex analysis is very useful and I think that's the strength of what we presented here. But when it comes to axial analysis for the interior of the structures, I don't think in that case it's very relevant. But in the city, definitely more relevant than the building, so... But I would say that space syntax does reveal, yes, it's relevant, but I don't know, I cannot tell you how much more relevant it is for the bigger scale. Or my work right now, I'm studying museums and we were presenting this paper yesterday on the Museum of Unlimited Growth by Le Corbusier and the Guggenheim. They were both spiral schemes, but the analysis of space syntax revealed things that apparently the models, or just the 3D visualization of those models, did not show that. So I do think that it's relevant and... But specifically for buildings, I think convex analysis. Does that, does that help?
It's some kind of answer to Victor. It's what analysis of Casa da Música. Well, what we discovered in space syntax analysis and even in Casa da Música, the flat, it was important to 3D analysis because of the presence of the vegetation, the trees. And we discovered that the visibility of Casa da Música is not different from the visibility of any other building around, in the roundabout and the next street. And we go there and if we want to see Casa da Música, it's not very easy to see Casa da Música. And it's only reduced to that part of the city because if you go to, in the Boavista Avenue, it's impossible to see Casa da Música only in the... Well, the days of Casa da Música is very, very little. And we demonstrate that. So I think Ramcoles had to, and that makes that, Casa da Música is not monumental in many of the factors that define monument. So I think Ramcoles had to make another strategy to make that a monument and it is the architectural form, it's the Gary effect, something very odd that, well, that makes the attention to Casa da Música, but not the visibility, accessibility and any other parameters relating to... The strategy of Ramcoles, I think, it's not a big thing that is seen from anywhere as usual with a big avenue. It's another strategy. If we want to be mean, we will say the... The roundabout was refurbished by Alvaro Cisa, well, more or less in the same time that Avenida dos Aliados. In Avenida dos Aliados, Alvaro Cisa cut the trees, all of them, making the visibility, for example, of city all very, very bright and all the buildings there. And in Boavista, he maintained completely the trees. I think Alvaro Cisa cut the visibility of Ramcoles. This is a very provocative... I don't know if it's provocative enough, but, well, it's a... Of course, Casa da Música is different. It meets the eyes by other means, not by a very high degree of visibility from any place in our city.
Hi, to Anna. You said that to have the shape of the blocks you get from Ibejeira, right? But then you had to draw the streets. And then, this is the question. You manually draw it or did you get any coding for image retrieving to get this street for you? And then the second question would be, this kind of analysis that you did, it was easy or quick to do so that you could reproduce it in many other cities easily? Or it's very time-consuming? So just time to do one city at a...
For the city of Bilbao, because it's a very small city, we chose to hand draw using CAD programs all the street segments, but you can transform using GIS software, transform the Ibejeira blocks into street segments. It wasn't that much time consuming. The hardest part was to get the data and to organize it. For instance, to get all the location for the retail establishments. I know that in Brazil you have Kinef, which gives you the information of the data, but I couldn't really use. So I had to go there and check all the retail establishments, which was the most time-consuming part. But for the calculations, it was actually really fast. In half a day, everything was finished and we were already analyzing the results. But that's because we used only one attribute, that was the income, and only towards the retail establishments. So I think that if you start adding more attributes, it will take more time, but it can definitely be redone in other cities.
One of the objects that you presented called my attention, which is a retail building. I had a chance to work for a company in developing some strategic analysis for the rearrangement of the layout. And one of the things that we figured out was that space syntax couldn't help that much in terms of what they had previously studied in terms of impulse, consumption, consumption society, etc., meaning that they had already a strategy to make you buy things that you didn't want to buy before you entered the building. And of course, visual analysis is now really, really good to deal with things at that time. At that time, we didn't have the tool. And what you've presented was much more, I would say, space-to-space observation. But in retail building, what you must do is not space-to-space observation, but space-object view. In simple terms, which are the products that are in the lowest places or the ones which are on your eye view, your eye position? And the sequence of products that are offered to you while you are moving along the alleys. So I think that's the tricky thing about studying retail buildings. It's exactly dealing with the relationship between movement and what you see, not in terms of space-to-space, but space-object, in which sequence you have. So then you will start, you will be able to start to talk the same language as they are interested in having this kind of conversation. So in this sense, not a question, it's just trying to change the model a little bit. And instead of doing space-to-space analysis, space-to-object visual analysis.
Yes, but it's perhaps maybe presentation not very explicit because it's really, it's the viewing person to the viewed object. It's there, it's there. And what you said it is, it's real. The space syntax analysis is not enough because, well, there is a very discussed question. It's the Newtonian question or the weight question or the gravity question in space syntax. And we think in a supermarket, shopping is absolutely necessary to consider that there are weights. And, well, the Sunay and the big chains of supermarkets, they know that and they put the rice in some place. And it's because of that that we produce another model using agent-based analysis. You can see in the televisions, yes. We, in that model, we have attractors and consumers' behavior. And it brings us something more that space syntax cannot bring to us.
I'd like to say something. Well, these presentations, not the first one because the first one, I would want to make a question, but they mainly focus on physical aspects. I made a research with space syntax some years ago and one of the conclusions, because it was a multidisciplinary project and we work with the different disciplines and it was really important to work with the social methods and we work with anthropologists to make the connection with the site, with the place, with the people. And you have to be really careful because the conclusions of space syntax were completely opposite of the conclusions of the social methods and the work with the people. And because it was not the visible, the physical aspect that were related with the main question of the research, we could not see it. It was invisible and that aspect are really important to make a study of a place. Because for several years, we know, we have methods to know places, to make researches about places, about perception, about use. And this is one more. It's a method that relates with maps and can give us a way to perceive the place, but we have to be careful to use only these factors because if not, the conclusion is not going to help you. For example, the kitchen, the laundry, yes, is perpetuated in the space, in architectural space. I'm curious about the new step of the research related with the participation project and the things that you are saying that you are going to do. Because you know, from the beginning of the century, kitchen, laundry keeps almost the same, doesn't have any kind of transformation. And even the city, the places of retail stores, related with the city center, yes, we know that people use almost every time that place is. But my question is related with the first presentation because I was really curious and I thought it was really interesting, the thematic. And even more, when you said that you wanted to understand how this movement, for example, of Sephardic Jews, and that is a theme that I study here in Portugal and I work with the University of Lisboa about the Sephardic Jews here in Portugal during history and now, and the Visigoths and so on. And I was curious to know how this could be represented, this research could be represented in a 3D, three-dimensional representation. And you use Islamic representations and I don't understand why. Because the cultural fields are completely different. Visigoths are mainly Chinese communities, for example. Sephardic Jews are not Islamic, they don't have Islamic representation. Why these Islamic patterns to try to give a 3D representation?
Maybe I didn't deliver the, it's very clear in the presentation. These cases we use, that one was specifically related to Turkey and Portugal. That one specifically was related with the Golden Visa and Sephardic Jews, was specifically related from Turkey to Portugal case. And the second one was specifically related to Morocco, Spain. And third one, Tunisia, Italy. So first, we started with general issues of migration and then we ended up with specific countries. And we use each case, in that case, we use Islamic geometric patterns because in Portugal, Spain, Tunisia, Italy, Morocco, Turkey, Italy, we see these patterns that they exist. And this is a kind of universal techniques that we're using that time to... And it's still, today's still visually visible in these countries. So with Sephardic Jews and Golden Visa, our focus was on Turkey, Portugal, relationship between Turkey and Portugal. And we merged the tile pattern from Turkey with the tile pattern from Portugal. So we see an object and from far away, we don't understand what it is. But if we are in the correct standpoint, we see that it is related from Turkey to Portugal because it represents, when we go around it, it's the visual distortion of the perspective represents the flow from Turkey to Portugal. This is what we wanted to represent. And also there is, in Turkey, this is a...
That 3D object relates with that is, that are related with the research you are making of the movement.
Yeah, it is related to flow of people, Turkish. In the Golden Visa case, measured that Turkey constitutes one-third of the Golden Visa applications. And also there is a recently increasing number of Sephardic Jews that are accessing dual nationality from Turkey and Portugal. So in the Golden Visa case, there is also Chinese, but our focus was from Turkey to Portugal.
Okay, okay. Can I just say something?
Yeah, of course.
I think that, your question is still in my head, I'm thinking here. And you've kind of pointed towards the same direction. And I think what we've been seeing here is a bunch of efforts towards complementary processes and towards space syntax. So I think that that's, it's got to be relevant if we're still trying to somehow bring new, other ways of complementing some political issues like the ones you just said here. In my case, I'm trying to bridge it with neuroscience. It's in the early stages of it. And it could be a way out of certain sort of personal issues of the level of the user instead of the pattern of, like, the scale of space syntax. So I guess bringing down the scale and comparing to the bigger one could be a path in 3D, I suppose, together with, I think, neuroscience, for instance, could point towards some direction of still proving that it's relevant, but it needs to be sort of complemented.
Okay, maybe we should finish to have lunch. Thank you so much.